Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you to the Rules Chairman for that vibrant good morning over there. The hour of convening has arrived and the Senate will now come to order and ask that all unauthorized persons, which would get us probably below a quorum, exit the chamber. It's my honor to recognize the Rules Chairman and appreciate your continued words of encouragement.
Indeed, thank you, Mr. President.
Even as recent as in the ante room, thank you.
Yeah, we'll keep that private. But thank you, sir, and let me commend all these men and women here to work for the people of Georgia, a few moments of history if you will. Today, in 1775, the United States Marine Corps were created and when the Continental Congress ordered them to attack, and they had created them. Also, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial was opened to the first visitors in Washington DC, November 10th, 1982. And the Senator from Dahloneka found the first gold in the mountains many years ago. Mr. President, the journal's been read and found to be absolutely correct.
This chamber is used to being a little more sharp than that, but special session, we understand. Is there objection to dispensing with the reading of the journal? The Chair hears none and the reading of the journal is dispensed with. Is there objection to confirmation of the journal? The Chair hears none and the journal is confirmed. All Senators who have bills and resolutions, please bring them to the Secretary's desk at this time. We're gonna move pretty quick here. We have no first readers, no second readers, and no reports of standing committees, so we're gonna move on to the morning roll call. We're gonna give everybody a minute to find their seats, to get to their buttons. It's now time for the morning roll call. It's now time for the morning roll call. Are there any motions to excuse? The Chair recognizes the majority whip.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senators from the First, the 20th, and the 49th for business outside the chamber.
Without objection, the Senators from the First, the 20th, and the 49th are excused. The Chair recognizes the Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Looking around the chamber, I've moved that we dispense with the morning roll call.
The Majority Leader has moved that we dispense with the morning roll call. Is there objection? The Chair hears none and the morning roll call is dispensed with. All right, it's now time for our morning devotional, and I'd ask that all Senators please take your seats, cease all audible conversations. Doorkeepers, please secure the chamber at this time. Like to recognize our good friend, the Senator from the 54th, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and to introduce us to our Chaplain of the day. If y'all will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Georgia State flag.
A pledge of allegiance to Georgia flag and the principle for which it stands, wisdom, justice, and moderation.
And courage. Yes, it is. We'll have that changed before no time. It's an honor for me to be with you today and literally just have the opportunity to introduce Danny Cochran, as we call him home, he's Danny Cochran. And Danny is literally one of those people that I put is the salt-of-the-earth kind of guy. He has his PhD, but if you call him doctor, he's going looking around for somebody that's sick because there's no arrogance about him. He's the most humble person you'd ever meet. And for 47 years, he's literally given his life to ministry. And all that he does in our community, just in Holly Creek Baptist Church, and his commitment to this church since 2000, he's been the pastor there, and all that he does in our community. But I want to tell you a little sidebar. Couple of years ago, Danny invited me to go with him and two or three of his friends, and Danny likes to hike the mountains, so we went to Rocky Face Mountain, and we went up the top on the George Disney Trail. And we got up, and that's when I saw the heart of this man. Just the three of us sitting there, and Danny brings out the word, and we had church on top of a mountain. And you could tell it meant as much to him with just three of us in front of him as it does on Sunday with a congregation full at Holly Creek Baptist Church. Danny's just one of those people that everybody loves, that we all love him. He's literally Northwest Georgia's pastor, I'll just put it like that, and it's my honor to introduce you, brother Danny Cochran.
Thank you, Senator Payne, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I know you have a lot of important business today, and for you to take time to listen to me as I share a brief devotion, I appreciate that, I'm honored. And I have spoken here before, several years ago, and always counted a privilege, and I'm thankful to live in a country and in a state where the sessions of the House of Representatives in Washington and Georgia began with acknowledging we're one nation under God. But today, I'd like to speak to you as individuals. I know the pressures of public leadership. We never please everyone, and some days, we wonder if we please anyone. And so, we deal with that, and everyone knows exactly how we ought to be doing what we're doing. And sometimes, especially in these days of political intensity, would be the term that I would probably want to use, it's probably been no more difficult than these days. And I want to thank you for your service. I want to thank you for giving time away from your family and putting your name out there because as a public individual in my county and the surrounding areas, everyone analyzes what we do, and so every day that we live, we have our critics. And if it were not something we felt called to do, we'd probably throw in the towel and quit. And so today, I want to share with you something that I need to remember myself, and I want to speak very briefly about enduring in a challenging world. Enduring in a challenging world. In Psalm 1, the Psalmist said, "Blessed is the man who walks not in the counsel of the ungodly, nor stands in the path of sinners, nor sits in the seat of the scornful; but his delight is in the law of the Lord, and in his law he meditates day and night. He shall be like a tree planted by the rivers of water, that brings forth its fruit in its season, whose leaf does not wither, and whatever he does shall prosper." So today, I'm not here to speak about issues, I'm here to speak to those of you who put yourselves out there to serve in the public arena. How do you endure when you face the issues that you're confronted with? How do you endure when you do the really best, the best you know to do with an issue, and maybe sometimes you even have information you can't share, and people criticize you and talk about you, and sometimes you simply can't respond? How do we find strength to endure in some of the most volatile political days in my lifetime? There are some things that I would call your attention to. It is important that we endure. It is important because our nation is so important, our state is so important, and with all of our faults and failures and needs and problems, we're still a shining light of freedom and prosperity and opportunity to many countries in the world, and I've traveled to several of those doing mission work. But sometimes, when you're in the middle of the battle and you're dealing with all the things you deal with, sometimes it just seems that it's hard to keep going on. Well, there's a need of endurance. I remember an older gentleman where I was working as a teenage boy in a truck body shop, and he was a man who was working and had ill health, and he would drive up from Atlanta to Dalton, Georgia every day to be at the shop, and he'd be there at first. And I remember, and some of the guys working around that truck body repair were not always the most polite gentlemen you would encounter, and one of them at lunch looked at him and said, "Oh, man, why do you keep doing this every day?" And he said, "Your health is bad, and you don't need the money. Why do you keep doing this every day?" And didn't learn a lot there that I could quote in a message, but I remember him pausing for a moment, and when he got everyone's attention, he said, "I learned a long time ago that a winner never quits and a quitter never wins." That discussion had been brought to an end. Where do we find the strength to carry on? Well, first of all, there's some things we reject in life. Notice as he describes this blessed man, and this is the introduction to the entire Book of Psalms, which was the hymnal in Solomon's temple, there's some things this person rejects. "He does not walk in the counsel of the ungodly." And all of us who speak in the public arena get all kinds of advice, and it's amazing how people who've never preached a sermon know exactly what I need to do to improve mine, and I'm sure when you're out there, you hear those things as well. And so, there's some things that we, first of all, reject. The Bible says that this person does not walk in the counsel of the ungodly, nor stands in the path of sinners. Now, that doesn't mean that this person is rude or this person hates people, but you always remember that I'm going to evaluate the counsel of everyone, and I'm going to evaluate it in light of my conscience and my God, and as a Christian, for me, this book is my guide. And so, as we walk through life, there's some things that we simply refrain from doing. There's some things that we would like to do to show someone, but we don't do that. The Bible says that this godly person does not walk in the counsel of the ungodly. And so, you listen, you evaluate, and make your own calls. Notice the next thing, we have to reject something, but then what do we embrace? And the Bible says in verse 2, that his delight is in the law of the Lord. This book is a book of wisdom. It tells us where we came from, it tells us the destiny of the human race. And it alone explains the problem we have, and it's in Genesis 3, it's the fall, and we are all sinners, and we're all in need of redemption, and we all have issues with pride, and we're all imperfect human beings, and so, we look to something beyond us to find the guidance, the help, and the strength that we need. As a person who studies every day to preach, I also need to study for Danny. I need to just sit and read, not what someone has written about the Bible, but to read the Scripture, and the Book of Proverbs is a wonderful place to read and learn how do we deal with adversity. Notice this person, his delight is in the law of the Lord. And so, this person is going to have a working knowledge of Scripture. How do I treat people? How do I respond? What is fair? What is right? And that person, when they search the Scripture, he or she prays for wisdom. The Psalmist said in Psalm 119, he said, "Open mine eyes, that I may behold wondrous things from your law." And sometimes you read the paper, and everything seems like it's falling apart, and then you quietly read not what someone has written about the Bible, but the text of Scripture itself, and God gives you inspiration, encouragement, instruction to carry on. So this person is a person, then, that finds guidance. We're never gonna please everyone, and so we look to the Bible because most of all, we want to please the one who gave us life, who gives us breath, who gives us opportunities, and who gave his Son for us on the cross of Calvary. And so, if we can only please one person, it should be the one who matters most. And then, this person is blessed. The Bible says, "This person will be like a tree planted by the rivers of water, and this tree brings forth its fruit in its season, and it does not wither, and whatever he or she does will prosper." Sometimes, we're in the middle of the battle, and it feels like all the world's against us, but remember, God is always a majority, and our God will always be enough. The Apostle Paul was placed in prison, he was beaten, he was stoned, and on and on and on, those things happen. And when he's in prison, he's soon to be executed, he wrote to Timothy, and he says, "I have fought a good fight. I have finished the course. I have kept the faith." And the person who says that at the end of life is a person who's delighted in God's law, who's served others in his name, and then has followed their conscience and God's guidance in the decisions of life. God hadn't called us to be popular, he's called us to be honorable, to be fair, and do the right thing. Ladies and gentlemen, I want you to know I respect you today. I want you to know that I appreciate you today. You put yourself out there. My prayer for you is that when the day is over and all the news you've heard is bad, you'll turn maybe to the Book of Psalms, maybe begin reading, "The Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want." And just meditate on the Word of God. That doesn't change your problems and the pressures and the obstacles, but it gives us peace and strength. May I pray? Father, I come to you today, first of all, I thank you for being a member of your kingdom, but I'm thankful for my dual citizenship. I'm a citizen of the greatest country on the planet, and Lord, I'm a citizen of the great state of Georgia. Our country's not perfect, but Lord, it still gives more, does more to help people around the world than any other nation, and Lord, there are many good and honorable people in our land, and there are many good and honorable people sitting before me today. They could be doing other things, but Lord, they sense your call to public service, and they put themselves out there to endure whatever they must endure because they want to do the most important thing anyone can do in life, they want to make a difference. Father, I pray you'll give them wisdom. Father, I pray when they are being criticized and opposition comes, they'll look to the cross and see what your Son endured for us, and Lord, I pray that you will give them wisdom and strength for the journey. Father, I lift our Senators, our Lieutenant Governor, and other leaders, I lift them up to you, and Lord, I offer this prayer in Jesus' name. Others may offer it differently, but I come to you in the name of my Savior. Amen.
Are there any unanimous consents? The Chair sees none. Are there any points of personal privilege? The Chair recognizes the distinguished Rules Chairman for a point of personal privilege. I figured that, that's why I called him. Hold on, let me get this chamber to order for the distinguished Rules Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President, 'cause I have an important message. I want you to know what an honor it is to serve with each and every one of you, and I have moved recently. You know, it's the seller's market, so I've moved. I'm at the foot of Lookout Mountain on the east side. The other day, now, my daughter put a nature camera out there, and so I can't go out there and do some natural nature things myself anymore. However, there was a bear out there. So I have black bear on my property, I have a mountain lion on my property, and I just thought it was some relatives for a moment, but it's a mountain lion. And then I have, let's see, we have killed four snakes, three copperheads, and one rattlesnake. I thought that was my ex-wife's mother for a moment, but it wasn't. And then, we've had, I don't know, 20 deer one day and 28 wild turkey, and so I just have a different perspective about things. I used to be a small-town guy, Mayberry kind of guy, but now I live out in the middle of nowhere, and cell service is terrible, and I'm on a fire stick for TV, but other than that, it's an unusual feel of serenity, I guess. 50 cattle in the pasture in front of me, so it's just a different way of life, and I want you to know, it gives me a more rural perspective and appreciation of nature and the God-given area that I live in. So, Mr. President, I just had that to say, it was inspired to me by somebody pressing my button, so I thought I'd come down here and share that with you. I yield the will.
That is the greatest impromptu speech this chamber has ever heard. Well played. Chair recognizes the Senator from the 9th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise today to talk about two bills that were snuck through our local delegation yesterday. We snuck it through. It did go through first read yesterday. We had about less than 24 hours to respond locally in Gwinnett County to these bills that we had not even seen yet or the maps. In 2018, in the 2020 elections, Gwinnett County voters chose to elect a Democratic majority to our local legislature. In 2018 and, and the 2020 elections, Gwinnett County voters chose to elect a Democratic majority to our local legislature, our Board of Commissions, our Board of Education, after decades of Republican leadership. Yet, unable to accept defeat, we see a pattern in Georgia where Republicans are fixated on ensuring that local government only exists to serve their party and not the will of voters in Gwinnett. Gwinnett overwhelmingly voted for Democrats in a majority of local districts and countywide. Unable to win fairly, weaponizing local legislation is the latest tactic to force through an extreme and unprecedented Republican agenda. SB 5EX and SB 6EX are clear attempts at a political grab designed to take over Gwinnett County, one of the most diverse counties in our state. What's even worse, the Senator from the 24th is one of the sponsors of this legislation. And he's not even from Gwinnett County himself. And has never interacted with the Gwinnett County government. And I know some of you in here, all of you in here have a delegation that you deal with. How about I come to your delegation and start telling y'all what to do? And even more troubling, the Senator from the 48th serves as floor leader to Governor Kemp, which leads me to believe Governor Kemp is involved in this overreach by trying to manipulate the operations and structure of our Gwinnett County Board of Commissioners and Board of Education. Such desperate clinging to power has resulted in an unprecedented subversion of our regular process. As duly elected senators and representatives from Gwinnett, we were not consulted or even informed about this legislation, ignoring the rules of the delegation itself. Gwinnett County's elected commissioners, school board members, most of whom are members of the Democratic Party, were not consulted at all about this change. The Board of Education was not consulted, even the Republicans sitting on the Board of Education were not consulted. The public was not consulted, no public comment. And we're seeking to change the configuration of our Board of Commissioners and our Board of, and our Board of Education. Senate rules and delegation bylaws have served Republicans during their majority tenure in Gwinnett County for decades now. But now those same rules are being circumvented under Democratic leadership. The rules of the Senate should not be used to override the majority, these rules. And the majority is in Gwinnett County in the Democratic Party. With no public engagement or public, or public participation, SB 5EX and SB 6EX flies in a face of transparency that all of you in here are saying that you're adhering to. SB 6, SB 5X is nothing more than a partisan attack on our school board seeking to change the way our Board of Education is elected and denying the rights of voters to choose elected representatives consistent with their own views. Right now, our students desperately need our support. Our Board of Education should be focusing on bettering our students' education and making sure they have the resources that they need to perform, instead of having to come down here and defend themselves. SB 6X is a shameful gerrymander to alter the rights of communities of color and is an unprecedented and radical expansion compared to any other county government in the state of Georgia, any other county government in the state of Georgia. SB 6X will hinder the operations and efficiency of Gwinnett County government. And no one's even talked about the fiscal impact that a bigger government, which those of you on the other side like smaller government, but this is going to be bigger government and more money to our taxpayers. I call on our Gwinnett residents to oppose this anti-Democratic power grab over our Board of Commissioners and our Board of Education and those supporting and sponsoring this legislation to remove it from consideration immediately. We're willing to come to the table and talk to you, and we ask that in good faith you do just that. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 56th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise today to commend my fellow members of the Senate Public Safety Committee. Over the last few months, we've held a series of meetings to address the rising and candidly alarming problem we have in crime, both in Atlanta as well as other major metropolitan areas throughout the state. People in our state deserve to both be safe and feel safe. And what started last summer has continued to cause great harm to our families and to our businesses. We have meetings scheduled in the future, and we've already had meetings with courts, judges, district attorneys, prosecuting attorneys, law enforcement, paroles, pardons, corrections, to talk about the problem. But the problem is not something that we need to reinvent. The first thing we have to do is get behind the men and women of law enforcement who carry the weight of that badge every single day, who have literally and figuratively been under attack for way too long. And I want to take an example of history. During the Vietnam era, our soldiers were treated so poorly and so unjust. Thankfully, as time went on, we started tying yellow ribbons around trees. We started having events to both send off and welcome home our soldiers, our heroes. And it's time we do the same for our law enforcement officers. I've got a proud sign in my front yard supporting the Roswell Police Department. Get a blue ribbon and tie it around your tree. Go up to one of the many men and women serving us in uniform and go say thank you. Because when they wake up every morning, they don't know if they get to come home. I also have a message today for our friends in the city of Atlanta. We have a jail that is sitting available right now that is being played politics and just simply missing the mark on taking care of the folks that can be protecting our streets and keeping felons out of our neighborhoods and our businesses. The city of Atlanta continues to play politics and games, and they want Fulton County to build a $400 million new jail. In government terms, that'll be a half billion before it's open. Yet I will tell you, as I stand here right now, people are going to get hurt this week. People may lose their lives this week because the Fulton County Jail is overcrowded. And the city of Atlanta is playing politics and stalling that. So, to our friends in the city of Atlanta, turn over that jail today. Not tomorrow, not next week, and not after an election cycle. Turn it over today, and please get behind the heroes that feel the weight of that badge, the men and women of law enforcement in our state. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well.
Thank you, Senator. Chair recognizes the Senator from the 36th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. I, I, I rise because I must after the stirring comments from the Senator from the ninth about the bill that has been introduced to shift the, the political landscape in the great county of Gwinnett. It's overreach, it's abuse of power, and it's people meddling with a total disrespect for those who are holding the offices and have been elected by the voters to make the decisions in their county. And I rise because this is not an isolated incident. We have people down here introducing bills who don't live in Atlanta and who are promoting a city of Buckhead. Do you know, Doctor, one member of the Atlanta delegation has, has their signature on any bill? But yet others are coming forward who live in other counties, in fact, to introduce these bills. Let's, let's just face facts. Having a majority vote in this, under this Gold Dome, in this chamber and in, and in the House, having a majority vote, the GOP having the majority vote, is not a license to abuse power. Public recognizes abuse of power. Believe it or not, they can see it. It's right there in front of them. When you understand that no one in the city of Atlanta delegation, which I chair in the Senate, has filed any bill addressing this matter. And so we have people who don't live in the city of Atlanta putting through bills, attempting to pass bills to create, which will create chaos, which will topple our bond rating of which we're so proud and which matters so much, to put again, Georgia on the, on the headlines nationally of making a move to create a 68% white city by carving out part of Atlanta. Never been done, it's never been done in the history of the state, sets a dangerous precedent. Georgia Municipal Association is on record very, very strongly advising against this. The business community in one united voice is saying cease and desist. You know, business community doesn't like chaos. They understand that stability is good for business. Chaos is bad for business, and that's what these bills creating Gwinnett, that's what these attempted bills create for Atlanta. And fundamentally, they represent an incredible abuse of power. An incredible, offensive abuse of power, which the public does not relish. And we are determined to be very clear and public about the fact that this is happening down here at the Gold Dome. Happening at a session that's supposed to be strictly about redistricting the state alliance for the House and the Senate and the, and Congress. So, we're sending out a warning. Clear and present danger, abuse of power is going on under the Gold Dome by the majority party. And they're not stopping with one, they're not stopping with two. They've, they've created districts that are 59% Republican, and that's the bill that y'all passed yesterday, in a state that's 50-50 in terms of partisan divide. So, the public needs to know, the public needs to keep their eyes open, and the public needs to speak out because it's happening now here in plain daylight under the Gold Dome. We're not going to allow it to happen in secret. Thank you.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 14th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's interesting, we want to talk about abuse of power. Let's talk about a federal government that's weaponized himself. Can you imagine, we're sitting right here in 2021 where we have citizens of the United States locked up in a jail in Washington DC with zero due process under a Democratic administration? Is this China? Is this Cuba? Oh, that's right, it was an insurrection. Ladies and gentlemen, insurrection requires weapons. Not one single individual has been charged in DC with carrying a weapon. Whether you're Republican or Democrat, you ought to be outraged that we would lock people in solitary confinement for 23 hours in a dungeon. Are you kidding me? We arrested Michael Vick for dogfighting and put him in prison. If you were to come into a home and you had dogs or cats locked in a basement, not taking care of them, we'd lock you up. We treat animals better than we treating citizens under a Democratic rule. Where's the dignity? Where's the outrage? Last I checked, the men and women that were celebrating Veterans Week, tomorrow's Veterans Day, they fought so we would live in a country where people would be treated right. True, a couple of congressmen, or congresswomen in this case. We're allowed to get into the prisons and look at this. One individual they witnessed, whole arms black, the fingers are turning black. Why are we not treating it? I've begged for medical condition, or medical attention, can't get it. One individual, an older man, has celiac, and yet the government's forcing him to eat cream of wheat. If he doesn't like it, they told him the family could buy him a different meal. The Democrats that are in charge ought to be embarrassed and ashamed of yourself that this is how we treat people. Ladies and gentlemen, we passed a heartbeat bill, and we had people here that were arrested. Did we lock them in a jail and not allow them due process and not allow them to see even sunlight? Are you kidding me? But yet, up in DC, we're going to ignore that. Each and every one of you ought to look in the mirror and go, I'm not only ashamed of this, but it stops today. That's not what we fought for in this country. It's a slippery slope. And I beg you to talk to your people and you yourself to go, enough is enough. And I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 21st for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I come up here to talk a little bit about the Senator from the 36th comments about the city of Buckhead. I am sponsoring that bill. I am a member of the Fulton County delegation. And I'm also a property owner in Buckhead. I own a condo that I've owned 10 years that I bought when I got elected. And I feel fearful to walk from my condo two blocks to Houston's, and that's a problem. And nobody has addressed the, the crime situation. We had a three-hour meeting yesterday, two days, a few days ago with the Senator from Slogos Committee. And the city of Atlanta and their representatives never talked once about how they're going to help alleviate the crime situation in the city of Atlanta or Buckhead. All they talked about were the bond ratings and how it's going to hurt Atlanta financially. And they never spoke how they're going to help those people at Buckhead. And those people deserve a chance to, to self-govern and to take care of matters in their own hands. And I will tell you, when I was involved in the city of Milton and the city of Sandy Springs and the city of Johns Creek, Fulton County said it would be doom and gloom, doom and gloom. Guess what? Fulton County's budget has increased, their staff's increased, it has not been doom and gloom. It will not be doom and gloom for the city of Atlanta. And I'll, I'll finish with this. When I have people calling me, telling me they will not allow their wife to go gas their car up in broad daylight at a gas station in Buckhead, we got a problem, folks. That's unacceptable. And I'm going to continue to fight to make sure we have crime under control and that the citizens in Buckhead are safe. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well.
You have a consent calendar of privileged resolutions before you. Does any Senator wish to remove a resolution from the consent calendar? The chair hears none. Is there objection or adoption of the resolutions on the consent calendar? The chair hears none. The resolutions on the consent calendar are adopted. Are there any motions to withdraw and commit? The chair sees none. We are now going to move on to the rules calendar. We are now going to move on to the rules calendar. Mr. Secretary, can you please read the caption to SR 4EX?
Senate Resolution 4EX by Senator Malice of the 53rd and others. A resolution recognizing and commending the Atlanta Braves and for other purposes. Mr. President, the Senate Committee on Rules recommends this resolution due pass by substitute Senator Malice of the 53rd District Chair. The Senate Committee on Rules offers the following substitute to SR 4EX. A resolution recognizing, commending the Atlanta Braves and for other purposes. That completes the order, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes the distinguished rules chairman, and we're going to wear a path out from that seat up here today, to present Senate Resolution 4EX.
Ladies and gentlemen, I know you're wondering, what in the world am I doing up here on a privileged resolution? And the truth is, this is a resolution commending them for winning the National League Championship. Now, it was done prior to them winning the World Series and prior to us being in session. So, in the wording, they put, they're doing well for the World Series, so I thought we needed to take that out. So that's why I'm here, to adjust that. We passed it out of rules last, yesterday, and thank you for that. But there's no conspiracy here. There's no trying to change somebody's district here. There's no working on the federal problem in DC here. This is just- This is just to change the resolution that I brought forward earlier. And I'd be glad to answer any ridiculous question that you may have.
And you're going to get one. The chair recognizes the Senator from the 19th for a serious question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator yield.
Yes.
Senator, do you mind telling us where you were inspired to write such a really redeeming resolution here?
Well, let me think on that for just one minute while I pull something up on my phone. And, I mean, "The truth shall set you free." Have I heard that before? Call a friend, I need the landline on that. Standby one. That's what I always say in the fire service, then I write, "Senator from the 56th." Excuse me, this is so important, though, I don't want to not present this. This better be good. All right, look, this is important, so kind of keep with me here.
Senator, while we're waiting, could you tell us your internet service provider? Because we're working on that as well.
Well, the problem is that I'm an old guy, and I'm not real good with technology. Have you noticed that? Yes? I still have a few minutes on my time, so, you know, bear with me.
Three, to be specific.
This is, you know, very important. All right, look, sorry, I should have done this before I came up here, but you know me, I didn't. I'm not going to do it now, so you'll just have to wonder what I was going to do. I was inspired by a gentleman with red hair that sits near me in the chamber.
Thank you, Senator. Would you yield for another question?
Yeah, but you've got that lawyer soft voice here, but, okay, come on.
The rumor is that you actually worked out with the Braves, but did not start working out with them until after the All-Star break, when their record dramatically improved. Could you speak to that and tell us whether or not there's any truth to that?
Well, that was a confidential thing that I was doing. As you can tell by my physique, that I was working out with them, but I had to, I couldn't work out fully because of my injury that I had in May. As you may have noticed, the cane that I currently take with me, when I remember it.
Will the Senator yield for one final question?
I will.
Senator, if had you not injured yourself at that vacuum cleaner site in northwest Georgia while vacuuming out your four-door King Ranch vehicle, do you think that the Braves' record would have been better this year?
No, it couldn't have been any better, because it was magnificent already. To be inspired by a team that has come from quaint activity to, when my dad was alive, he loved them no matter how poorly they performed, and, as you know, they have come up so proudly, and we have supported them so immediately and overwhelmingly because of their outstandingness. And as you know, we're working to get them here now for the Senator from the 34th primarily, and I know that that's going to happen soon. And let me end by this, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. President. For the rest of you that don't know that chant, I would ask you for your vote today, and thank you so much for you tolerating me in the well and not being prepared like I should be, and how I love every, each and every one of you, well, some of you, well, maybe a couple of you. I'm kidding. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well before you throw me out of here.
I'm not certain you know this, but it's still playing in your pocket. Does any of the senator wish to inspire us with their words of wisdom around Senate Resolution 4? And did I get that right? Was the Senator from the 19th trying to take credit for writing your resolution quietly? The velvet steamroller? Does any of the senator wish to speak for or against the measure? The chair hears none. The question is on the adoption of the committee substitute. Is there objection to adoption of the committee substitute? Chair hears none. The committee substitute is adopted. Is there objection to agreeing the report of the committee, which is favorable to the adoption of the resolution? The chair hears none. The report of the committee is agreed to. Is there objection to the main question being ordered? The chair hears none. The main question's ordered. Questions on the adoption of the resolution by substitute? All those in favor of the resolution vote yea. Opposed, nay. The secretary will unlock the machine. What purpose does the Senator from the 33rd rise?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Is it true that the Senator from the 53rd is faster than Sid Breen?
That is for each and every member to determine on their own. On the adoption of the resolution by substitute, the yeas are 49, the nays are 0. This resolution, having received the requisite constitutional majority, is therefore adopted by substitute. Well done, Senator. Mr. Secretary, can you please read the caption to Senate Resolution 5EX?
Senate Resolution 5EX by Senator Dixon, the 45th and others. A resolution ratifying Governor Brian P. Kemp's executive order numbers 5.10.21.02, 5.14.21.1, 5.21.21.1, and 5.28.21.3, suspending the collection of motor fuel and diesel fuel taxes and for other purposes. The Senate Committee on Finance recommends this resolution due pass. Senator Huffstettler, the 52nd District Chair, that completes the order.
What purpose does the distinguished Senator from the 28th rise?
Mr. President, I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senators from the 27th and 25th.
Without objection, the Senators from the 27th and the 25th are excused. Chair recognizes, for what purpose does this minority leader rise?
I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 34th.
Without objection, the Senator from the 34th is excused also. Chair recognizes the Senator from the 45th. One moment, please. For what purpose does the Senator from the 50th rise?
President, I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 47th.
Without objection, the Senator from the 47th is excused. Now, the chair recognizes the Senator from the 45th to present Senate Resolution 5EX.
Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me the opportunity to present Senate Resolution 5EX, a resolution that's part of Governor Kemp's agenda during special session. In May of 2021, a ransomware attack on the information technology system forced the Colonial Pipeline to shut down. This shutdown caused a panic at the pump up and down the East Coast. In response, Governor Kemp issued four executive orders and declaring a state of emergency suspending motor fuel tax and diesel fuel tax collection through, from May 10th through June 2nd, 2021, 23 days. In the past, we have ratified similar executive orders in 2011 and 2014, and if we don't ratify this, the Department of, the DOR, would be forced to go back and collect that motor fuel and diesel fuel tax through that time period, and then it would ultimately be passed on to the consumer. And the way those taxes are collected, when you pay at the pump, you stick your card in the machine, and it goes directly, for example, to Exxon. And Exxon, you know, they collect that money, they pay those taxes, so the DOR would go back to Exxon to collect those taxes, but it's a waterfall effect. So then those costs would be passed on to the supplier, which supplies the convenience stores, and then ultimately passed on to the store itself, and then potentially on to the customers. Mr. President, I ask this body for favorable consideration. If there are no questions, I'll yield the well.
You have no questions.
Thank you.
Does any other senator wish to speak for or against the measure? The chair sees none. Is there objection to agreeing the report of the committee, which is favorable to the adoption of the resolution? The chair hears none. The report of the committee is agreed to. Is there objection to the main question being ordered? The chair hears none, and the main question is ordered. The question is on the adoption of the resolution. All those in favor of the resolution vote yea. Opposed, nay. Secretary will unlock the machine. On the adoption of the resolution, the yeas are 49, the nays are 1. The resolution, having received the requisite constitutional majority, is therefore adopted. Chair recognizes our majority leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm moved that the Senate stand in recess pending receipt of a House message, and then reconvene for the first purpose of first reading and reference of House bills, and upon completion of that business, adjourn pursuant to HR 2EX until 1:00 PM on Thursday, 11 November, 2021.
Mr. Secretary, do you have any announcements?
The Rules Committee meeting has been canceled for today. State and local government operations will meet in room 307 CLOB at 1:00. The Senate Committee on University Fees will meet in room 307 CLOB at 2:00. That completes the order.
Does any senator wish to make an announcement? The majority leader has moved that the Senate stand in recess pending receipt of the House message, and then reconvene for the purpose of first reading and reference of House bills, and upon completion of that business, adjourn pursuant to HR 2EX until 1:00 PM on Thursday, November 11th, 2021. Is there objection? The chair hears none, and the chamber has moved. Is there objection? There is no objection. Is there objection? Chair recognizes the majority leader to speak to his motion.
I'll let the minority leader explain what her objection is. What I have put in for you is the most complicated thing we're going to do this year. We're going to recess instead of adjourn, until later in this afternoon, when the two chambers can get on the same track to do what is mandated that we do during this redistricting process. So, I'm not 100% sure how controversial that could possibly be, but I would ask for your favorable consideration on this measure. Thank you.
Chair recognizes the minority leader to speak to her objection.
Thank you, Mr. President. According to the rules, the first reading has already been read. It's already been read the first time. That is my objection.
I've been instructed by the secretary that messages from the House are in order at any time during our normal business. From the House. All those in favor of the motion by the majority leader, vote yea. Opposed, nay. On the motion, the yeas are 29 and the nays are 18, and the motion has carried. This body will stand in recess.